... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. I want to let everyone know that there is a copy of the Open Meetings Act posted in the meeting room and is accessible to all members of the public at any time during the course of this meeting. The first item on the agenda is my pleasure to introduce my first proclamation as mayor of the city of Beatrice, and it has to do with the Homestead National Monument. The proclamation reads as follows: "Whereas the United States meant America the Beautiful Quarters Program, created by Public Law 110456, produces circulating quarters emblematic of a national park or other sites in each state, the District of Columbia, and five U.S. territories; and whereas the Homestead National Monument of America Quarter is the 26th release into circulation as part of the program; and whereas Beatrice is home to the Homestead National Monument, celebrating the history of the Homestead Act of 1862; and whereas the America the Beautiful Quarters Program features the Homestead National Monument on the back of the U.S. quarter; and whereas on February 10, 2015, at 10:00 a.m. Central Standard Time, a ceremony will be held at Beatrice High School in Beatrice, Nebraska, to commemorate the release of the Homestead National Monument of America Quarter into circulation." Now therefore, I stand, mayor of the city of Beatrice, do recognize February 10, 2015, as Quarter Day in Beatrice. And Mark Engler, superintendent of the Homestead National Monument, is here. Mark, would you come up here and accept the proclamation?
First off, I'd just like to say thank you for the proclamation, and we are honored to call Beatrice home, and as well, we are honored to represent the great state of Nebraska on the 26th Quarter in the America the Beautiful Quarter series. And as well, we are honored to be telling America's Homestead story now, not only here in the state and beyond our borders, but across the nation through this quarter. And we hope that everybody joins in in celebrating Quarter Day, February 10. And we'd like to invite everybody to the celebration as well, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Mark. Definitely going to be a historic day, and this doesn't happen but once in a lifetime, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a citizen in attendance so requests. Item A: Approve agenda as submitted. Item B: Receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. Item C: Receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. Item D: Approval of minutes of regular meeting on January 19, 2015, as on file in the city clerk's office. Item E: Approval of minutes of special meeting on January 26, 2015, as on file in the city clerk's office. Item F: Approval of minutes of work session on January 26, 2015, as on file in the city clerk's office. Approval of Treasurers' Report of Claims in the amount of $221,783.28. Item H: Approval of the Boswell Report of Claims in the amount of $33,207.99. Item I: Setting the public hearing for the One in Six Year Plan to be held February 16, 2015, at 7:00 p.m. That is the Street Plan. Item J: Resolution Number 5728, appointing Jason Suter and Robert McClelland to the City of Beatrice Library Board. Item K: Resolution Number 5729, appointing Al Fetty to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Item L: Resolution Number 5730, appointing Krista Whedel to the Civil Service Commission. Item M: Resolution Number 5731, appointing Krista Whedel to the Board of Adjustments. Item N: Resolution Number 5732, approving an interlocal agreement for the Southeast Nebraska 911 Emergency Communications Study Agreement Addendum. Item O: Refer claim of Evelyn Fitzwater, 701 North 8th Street, for damages sustained to her electric stove on January 19, 2015, allegedly as a result of a power outage, to the city attorneys and city insurance carrier for review and disposition. And Item P: Approval of special designated liquor license application of St. Joseph's Catholic Church for a special event on March 1, 2015, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at 612 High Street, Beatrice. Is there any item that a city council member would like removed from the consent agenda? Anyone from the audience? Mr. Catlin?
Mayor, I move that all the items listed under the consent agenda be approved, accepted, and/or ratified as presented.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Claybaugh, that the consent agenda be approved. Your vote, please. And that vote is seven... Yeah, we're okay. Seven-zero. Ted Fairbanks is absent from tonight's meeting. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing on the application of LMRRLLC for a community development block grant reuse funds in the amount of $80,000 plus $2,000 in administration fees.
Any CDBG grant or loan application we have requires a public hearing, so we've scheduled that here before you tonight. As you saw in your packet, the LMRRLLC, or Mr. and Mrs. Russkamp, they're coming before you, asking for funds to assist them with the purchase of ongoing business here in town. We've broken their request into two parts, first part being the CDBG portion, the second part being an LB840 loan application. In your packet, you'll note that the CDBG portion of that's an $80,000 loan over a term of seven years. The job retention is for three jobs for 60 out of 84 months, and when you do the math, that's the way that comes out. As far as repayment goes, there are no payments the first six months, then as you'll notice in your packet, the payments escalate over the course of the loan, all to be come to a final payout amount there. And you'll note the security will be a deed of trust in the personal residence, personal guarantees, and UCC filings on the business assets.
Comments, gentlemen? The Russkamps are here. Rob, LeAnn, do you want to address the city council? Just state your name, if you would, please, and your address.
My name's LeAnn Russkamp. Our address is 2778 East Juniper Road, Beatrice, Nebraska.
Rob Russkamp, same address.
Good to know. Gentlemen, do you have any... You all have the information in your packet. Do you have any questions, comments of the Russkamps regarding their application?
The security, your equipment?
What do you have for security on this thing, on your equipment?
Do you mean the equipment through the business?
Collateral.
Through the business, we have several pieces of equipment. There are embroidery machines, a six-head and a four-head machine, as well as screen printing equipment, computers, retail store fixtures, office supplies, inventory. The assets equal about $85,000.
How old are these machines?
They are seven to 10 years old. The great thing about the equipment is that it's pretty foundational. The industry hasn't really changed too much in the technique of screen printing, and we see those pieces of equipment being able to be used for the next five to 10 years, for sure.
New, those things are about $70,000, $80,000, aren't they?
Pardon me?
New, those things are about $70,000, $80,000.
Depending upon which, yeah. The single one is a little less than that.
Right. Especially with the embroidery machine, those can be $30,000 for a multi-head embroider.
Bob? Could you just share with us a little bit about maybe your experience in this area, or also what excites you about taking over this possible business?
Sure. I've been in the marketing and advertising business for 25 years, graduated from UNL, always worked in the industry of marketing and advertising and promotions. I have a background in graphic design work. We moved to Beatrice about seven years ago for Rob's job. We love the community and very excited about the opportunity of building something special within the community. I think there's a lot of community pride, and this is a business that's been a staple of the community for the last 20 years. There has been a little bit of a downward trend in terms of sales and revenue for the business, and we see this as a perfect opportunity to lift up that business and keep some of those sales here in Beatrice.
Thank you.
Rick?
How much of your own money are you putting into the...
We have about $10,000 to $15,000 that we're putting towards the business. Much of it is for attorney fees, some of the startup expenses, looking at building out the retail environment to freshen that up a little bit, and then also some of the expenses with startup.
So you're going to be 100% in the business, and then you're going to work part-time, then?
Correct. I'm going to stay full-time at my position now.
Any other questions? Any comments from the public? Glennis?
Yes, good evening, gentlemen. I'm Glennis McClure with Engage. This application didn't come through Engage initially, and we're trying to eventually get to that point where all the applications with 840 and CDBG come through Engage, at least so that we have an opportunity to work with them and help them. But this was, in both of the applications this evening, I did have an opportunity to meet with them right away, Tobias, and I met with them and went over, you know, what the 840 and CDBG guidelines were and so on. And I did have an opportunity to, in follow-up, to attend the CARC and also meet with LeAnn again on that. So I just wanted to just add a couple comments in that. I think that both, again, CDBG and 840 funds in this case, really provide a nice gap for a business that's in transition. If you will, there is the buying of a current business, and so there is some goodwill, I guess, as part of buying the name and the opportunity here. So I think, again, it's probably not a bankable deal, but in this case, the funds that the community provides in this regard will help get this done. And I think also, I think it's great that they've worked out terms, again, that would help a business like this start and grow. And again, I've been impressed by the due diligence and work that they did in all of this, having a consultant come in and appraise the business, and also they've been working with a business plan consultant along the way, and also, I guess, LeAnn's marketing background and her experience in this, I think, will be a plus for the community. So it's a way to retain a business here, and otherwise, you know, who knows what may happen to that business, so, okay? Just my comments.
I guess you're buying the municipal building, then, too?
No. It's a lease space.
Rich?
Noticed on the expense sheet here, there are three other loans that are going to be taken off on this business. One for $35,000. The owner is going to hold a $25,000, plus you're asking for another 60 in LB840 funds, plus you got rent, supplies. That's an awful big chunk, don't you think? You said the business was appraised at $85,000?
No, sir. The business was appraised for $211,000, and we had that valuation completed by the University of Nebraska. In Kearney, they have a business development group, and we had an outside appraiser take a look at the financials, took a look at the business revenue, cost of goods, profit, wages, rent, advertising benefits. All of those were considered when providing a valuation for the business.
Are we getting a second or a first lien on this?
We'll have a second. We'll have a second position, I believe, on all of the collateral.
Well, guys, we got $93,000 left in our CDBG funds. If we give them $82,000, that's going to leave us $11,000 in our CDBG funds. We've got $822,000 left in our LB840 funds, and they're asking for 60, and then we've got another one coming up later that's 300,000. So that's not going to leave us much in those funds either. We're running ourselves out of money real quick. In another six months, we're not going to have any money to help anybody out, so...
Phil?
I understand that, Rich, that we're running, using up our money, but that's what the money was for, was for loans, for businesses. You know, two weeks ago, when that came through as a packet, I was a little nervous about it. The more information they gave you about, you know, they're actually have a loan payment schedule set up, where most of them, we don't have loan payment schedules that actually lays out how they are going to pay their rent, who's doing what. You know, it seems like they've done a lot more legwork than most people that come through and ask for loans from us. You know, they have done, you know, how many people have actually went to University of Nebraska and had them do appraisals for it? It came back showing that it's worth way more than what they are asking for, so there is a lot of blue sky that we are not paying for. And if it's worth $210,000, they're asking for altogether 140. There's still a bunch of money that this has potentially to generate for them, so I think, you know, all in all, it looks like a fairly decent loan.
They could put the appraisal at anything they want. Cash money, what they have for securities is only $85,000. So that's $67,000 on all of the loans, that is flat blue sky. I don't care what, you know, you can put the appraisal at anything you want.
But with them having an outside appraisal makes it worth a little bit more than if somebody from in-town, University of Nebraska has no reason to...
The economy being as it is, who says you're going to get $200,000 if you had to sell it? I mean, I don't know. This one makes me real nervous. And of course, I've said on the LB840 funds, I'd make my position on that.
Dwight?
I've got a question for you. If this does not go through tonight, is this your last option, or do you have alternative what you could be doing, or...
This would be our last option.
Any other comments? Mr. Catlin, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing at 7:19 p.m.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook. Close the public hearing, and your vote, please. And that is approved, seven to zero. Introduce a resolution approving a loan from CDBG revolving loan fund in the amount of $82,000 for financial assistance to LMRRLLC in the amount of $80,000 and the administration fee of $2,000.
Mayor, I move that Resolution Number 5733 be passed and adopted.
Second.
It's been moved by Catlin, seconded by Partey.
Mayor, I will note that the CARC did meet, obviously, and did review this application. They made a recommendation to approve this application onto the city council on a vote of two to one. And also, I want to clarify that the administrative fees of $2,000, those get paid to the city as part of our administrative fees. It goes out of the CDBG loan fund and gets paid back to the city for essentially our time for administering this. This is an additional fees that the Russkamps incur or receive, so I did want to clarify that issue.
Any other discussion? Anybody from the audience? I'd ask for your vote, please. And that is approved, four to three. Correct?
Four or five. It's for the expenditure of funds. I believe it. Majority of the body? I think it is.
That passes four to three. Resolution 5733 has been passed and adopted. Next item is resolution identifying the CDBG administrator. And I'd introduce Resolution Number 5734.
Mayor, I move that Resolution Number 5734 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Been moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook. The Resolution 5734 be passed and adopted. Discussion, please.
As with any CDBG loan or grant that we have out there, the rules require that we appoint a CDBG certified administrator. In this case, Mr. Butcher will be serving in that capacity, and that's why the administrative funds will be paid back to the city of Beatrice.
Okay. Do we need to vote on this?
Yes.
Any discussion? Your vote, please. And that has passed, seven to zero. Resolution 5734 has been adopted. Next item on the agenda is resolution approving a loan from LB840 funds to LMRRLLC in the amount of $60,000.
Mayor, I move that Resolution Number 5735 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by, was that Morgan? That Resolution Number 5734 be passed and adopted. Discussion. Obviously, the same folks are in front of you. Any other questions? Anyone from the audience? All right. I'd ask for your vote, please. And that is the same, four to three. Resolution Number 5734 has been passed and adopted.
5735, Mayor.
I beg your pardon?
5735.
735.
This is 735, isn't it?
Correct.
Yeah. So 735 has been passed and adopted. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Good luck.
Good luck.
All right. Next item on the agenda is a resolution approving a loan from the LB840 fund to Kapalji LLC, doing business as the Victorian Inn, in the amount of $300,000.
Mayor, I move that Resolution Number 5736 be passed and adopted.
Been moved and seconded by Billsbach. That Resolution Number 5736 be passed and adopted. Discussion.
Again, in your packet, you'll note that the terms of this loan are in there. It's a $300,000 loan out of the LB840 funds. It carries a 10-year term, and the Patel's are here to explain their project, but essentially it's the addition of rooms onto the Victorian Inn and a swimming pool to their facility there. They'll make monthly payments. We've figured out amortization schedule on a 2.9% interest rate over the life of the loan. Security position will be that of a deed of trust, which will be in a second position on the property there for the Victorian Inn. And the CDBG, or excuse me, the CARC reviewed this application as well and recommended approval on a two-to-one vote to this board.
KJ, Dan, you want to come up? If you'd give your name and address, please.
Dan Patel, 1903 North 6th Street, Beatrice, Nebraska.
KJ Patel, same address.
Okay. Gentlemen, do you have any questions for the Patel's regarding what their plans are? Dwight?
It seems like usually, you don't pay for something after it's happened. Looks like the additions have already been added on.
We are working on it. Framing is done right now. About 40% is completion right now. We have a little bit of loan from Pinnacle Bank also to start the work. The whole project is about $600,000, so the LB840 will give us half the money, and the rest will be from the Pinnacle Bank.
Bob?
So do you find not having a swimming pool a disadvantage to you?
Yes. We get a lot of families throughout the year, especially summertime, so we definitely need it, and it can increase our revenue and our ADR as well.
Plus, in summer, we need more rooms in Beatrice overall for hotels. With a lot of new construction going on, new coke nitrogen expansion for last few years, I mean, people have to stay in Lincoln all the time in summer, so that should be good for Beatrice, too.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have a question? Phil?
How many people were you going to, additional employees?
Right now, it looks like we have to hire about four to five people just to keep it, you know, with the new work and stuff, that we have to keep the hotel going.
And what do these type of employees make per hour?
Eight to nine dollars an hour for now.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I guess I'll ask the same question I asked earlier to the other people. What happens if this loan does not go through? You already have, half of it already paid for.
Right. Then we'll have to look for other private, you know, banks or with Pinnacle Bank.
Have you tried other loans before you come to this, or...
We have tried, but I thought we should try these two since we're going to get, you know, we'll be working with the city quite a bit and stuff like that, so...
One thing I don't think you should discount is the lodging tax that is collected by the addition of the rooms and the rooms that are already in place.
Does this add more rooms onto the hotel as well?
Yes.
How many more?
Ten, ten more rooms for occupancy.
Tobias, could you explain a little bit about the TIF financing, why this doesn't work? I've had several people ask me about maybe TIF financing for this particular project.
Sure. TIF financing doesn't work for the Patel's project for a couple reasons. One, the project's already started. We can't TIF anything that's already up and the project has started. Two, TIF projects go towards, TIF financing goes towards what are public improvements, so generally, water lines, sewer lines, utilities, those types of things. We've done some parking lots in the past. In this case, most of, not all the improvements are interior improvements as an addition with interior improvements. Those types of things are not eligible for TIF financing. Those would be the two main reasons why TIF is not available for them in this project.
We did try. That was my first...
I've had several people ask me.
We had that discussion like a couple, about a year ago, so...
How often is your place, like 90, 95% full?
Quite a bit in summer. Like 100% full quite a bit in summer. Probably four to five days a week.
Anything else? Anybody from the public? Glennis?
Yes, I had an opportunity, again, early on, when Tobias and Banker and I met together, and I guess from the Engage point of view, it's good to see an expansion. It's a business that's expanding and doing well. It's good that this business will help fill a demand, because there are times when there is a demand, and as the mayor said, there are tax dollars and... is a demand, and as the mayor said, there are tax dollars and those funds that come back, you know, on the sale of these rooms and so on. So from that perspective, you know, it's probably, it's a good project. It's good that, you know, the company's growing. Also, from our perspective, to help, you know, try to help with some other, like what else is out there to maybe help them with this project. So we talked about some of the state tax incentives, and again, there's certain things that fit and certain things that don't, but we provided some information on that, so... Okay?
Thanks, Glenys. Any questions of Glenys?
Not of Glenys, just kind of as the group. It really seems strange to me that we're going to think about financing something that's already happened. I mean, the plan is already there. You must be planning on finishing it up. You wouldn't quit halfway through it, so there must be other alternatives you're looking at. I don't know if it's because...
Actually, when we started, I was thinking about value, project value, about $400,000. And when we kind of got into it and we did quotes and the bids came for different contractors and stuff, it went past what we were thinking, and we are like, okay, now we got to look for other options. And that's when we started talking to Glenys and Tobias and stuff to see if we can get the loan from the city.
Did you go back to the bank and try to increase that?
Yes, we did. So we have a little bit of flexibility over there, too.
You do have?
Yeah.
But we'd rather get it from the city.
I suppose everybody would.
Stan?
Yes, Rich?
We are now down to 200, or 700, and I hate to keep hammering on this, $762,000 in our LB840 funds.
But it will replenish itself, as you know.
And it takes, it takes a year to put in 250. We just gave 376,000. This 300,000, that's going to be a little over three years before we replenish back up to the point we were three months ago. Right now, LB840 funds can fund tearing down that building and fixing up that building that we've got downtown. We also have a $200,000 intersection out at the industrial park we need to pay for. If we deplete all these funds, we're going to have to go borrow money to do that, and one of our jobs is good stewardship of the taxpayers' money. We're going to have to go borrow money, pay interest and everything else, so...
Just point of clarification, that fund should be replenished up to 250 additional thousand by the end of March. Won't take a year.
I thought that only replenished until October. October 1st, we put a... We draw our monies out of the tax.
Each fiscal year, we reimburse that account up to $250,000, or we put $250,000 into that account, and Linda indicated you put $50,000 in per month, starting October 1st, so each month you put in $50,000 until you hit the $250,000 mark.
But $250,000 a year, and we've already, if we give this one out, and plus everything else, 376,000, 300, that's 600, you're talking almost 700,000. $250,000 a year, that's still three years before we replenish the fund of the money that we've given out.
Okay. Phil?
Tobias, do we have any near-future projects coming that you know that we need?
The LB840 funds? You have another loan application, which is currently working its way through CARC. They'll hear it Wednesday, so it'll come to you probably March, be my guessing, by the time it gets here. As Rich indicated, you have an intersection at Sixth Industrial Row that we had earmarked to pay for with LB840 funds, to redo that intersection. Outside of that, no, I don't know of anything else that's forthcoming with LB840 funds.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Excuse me, Stan. As I stated, LB840 funds can be used for destruction of that 407 downtown. How much is that one coming through?
Which, $110,000 is what they've asked for.
So the intersection's probably going to cost us, what, a couple of hundred thousand? Half, quarter million?
Freely literary numbers, yes.
All right, you're already up to 350 million there, or, excuse me, 350,000 there, plus you have no idea what that 704 is going to cost, or 740, whatever that number is down there. And you've only got 762,000 left, guys.
Okay, let's move on.
And I'll just restate, I'm going to vote no, and it's not for you guys, it's just I don't like LB840 funded money, and I do know the state legislature has let us do it, but I don't like them being used for the...
Okay. Any further discussion?
Before we... Before we vote, you want to chat? Sure. Can we take a quick...
Five-minute recess?
Yes, before we vote on this, to...
Sure.
Look over something real quick?
Sure.
We're going to take a quick recess just to review something real quick.